The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment or take action on any matter during public comment. Any individual speaking during public comments shall address the entire board. Any person who weirdly interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you would like to speak to an agenda item or a public comment, you must sign up on the sheet with the clerk. Time limit to speak to the agenda item is also three minutes. So... Mike, if he's disrupting the meeting, please ask him to leave.
Do not touch me. Do not touch me. Am I being trespassed on the threat of arrest? Am I being trespassed on the threat of arrest? Do not touch me, sir. Am I being trespassed on the threat of arrest? Answer the question. Am I being trespassed on the threat of arrest? Answer the question. Answer the question. No, I did not ask to leave.
I just asked him to leave.
Am I being trespassed on the threat of arrest? Answer the question. Answer the question. Answer the question. Am I being trespassed on the threat of arrest? This is easy. You're on the hammer. No, they did not. Answer the fucking question. Am I being trespassed on the threat of arrest? Oh yeah, come on. Okay. All right. So why are you... You have not asked me to leave.
I asked you to leave.
What have you asked me to leave now? Do not ask me to leave. It's for... If you take me down to the ground, I am perfectly happy here. You're being trespassed on the threat of arrest?
Okay.
You just said no. We're not leaving. We gotta leave us. So by going to rest, I do not... Get your fucking hand off it. Am I being trespassed on the threat of arrest? Yeah, I asked you to leave. And have it written. And have it written. Get your hands off me. I have a point. I need this right now. Get your fucking hand off.
Do I need to move on?
You can now.
I leave on. Okay. Okay, we're at 3.2, any public comment. Mr. Jenkins, do you want to speak in public comment?
I signed up for it.
Okay, come on up. You've got three minutes to state your name and your community of residence, please.
My community of residence?
Yes, sir.
I don't live in a community, sir.
Where do you live?
In a house.
Where do you live? What community is that house in?
In Florida. It's my place of residence. I'm only here to help veterans, sir.
Okay, well, go ahead and speak.
My name is Greg Jenkins. I feel like I'm in the North Pole. I'm not from here, but it sure is cold here. I drove through snow and ice to come and speak on behalf of my brothers. This here new, uh, new policy. Nine changes from the old policy. Not one change, sir. Not one. Nine changes.
Excuse me, you were signed up to speak on veterans and law enforcement, not public comment policy.
It pertains to veterans, sir. I'm speaking on behalf of veterans.
Well, then you need to speak on...
I can speak on anything I want to. And my time has now been interrupted again.
I just paused it.
Yeah, you paused it.
So, Mr. Jenkins...
Sir, you paused it after I was interrupting.
We're gonna let you, we're gonna let you speak on the policy during the meeting. Because you signed up for that.
So you're gonna limit my speech during public comment as to what I can speak about?
Mr. Jenkins can speak on anything he wishes.
I can speak on Mary Poppins if I want to, Mr. Phillips. But I really wanna talk about veterans, sir.
Okay.
That's what I've talked about for two years here, sir. For two years, I've talked about veterans. You think this shenanigans is something to look at? There's thousands watching y'all. I have nothing to do with that. I cannot believe, because I wanna help veterans in this community, that it's come to this. They told you there was one change in this policy. There's nine. Well, we're just gonna change it to seven minutes, and then we'll change it back to ten minutes, and we'll tell them that we did something. It's just one change. There's nine changes on this policy. I don't know why we have to lie, cheat, and steal in Avery County. But I'm gonna get to the bottom of it, y'all. That guy's a joke. He's got 34,000 subscribers. I got brothers with millions of subscribers. They cannot believe what they're witnessing here. Unbelievable. Veteran homelessness grew 7.4% last year because of counties like Avery that have nothing. But y'all did admit that there's homeless veterans here on your Facebook page. Finally, after two years, to get more donations, you finally had to admit it. Do you think there's homeless veterans all across America, but none in Avery County still after two years of telling me this? That the BF Duncan, the DAV takes care of them? Really? Do you think I would be in this podunk town when I could have my toes in the sand and a drink in my hand, driving through the snow and the ice, when I could be sitting on the beach? Really? Y'all believe that? Really? My wife looks a lot better in a bikini than she does in a fur coat.
That's your time, sir. Sorry.
Okay. Anybody, oh, nobody's signed up. Okay. Let's move on to 3.2C, Board of Formless, Avery Airport Authority. There are three applicants, and they are Samuel Cowbert, Doug Jennings, and James Maxson. And we'll need a motion to approve those three.
So moved.
Same.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next ones are for review. They are the Morrison Library, Amy Regional Library Board, and the Review of Planning Board, and Review of Park Recreation Committee items. And so, for the, uh... The advisory boards are, they are... And is this, uh, this, uh, this is your Avery Regional Library. There are Frank Hughes, uh, Jason Gwynn for the planning board. Would you hold these over one? They're all kinda... Is that just one for that?
We're just reviewing them.
Just reviewing all of them? Okay.
Yeah, we're just reviewing them.
For the planning board is Jason Gwynn.
Yes.
For the rec department advisory board is Greg Andrews. Uh, rec department Brittany Bean. Uh, Robert Brankley from the Recreation Advisory Committee. Dawson McCannon. Uh, Todd Combs, Avery County Recreation Board. Jason Farrell, Recreation Advisory Committee. Amy Green, Recreation Advisory Committee. Chad Morden, uh, Avery County Advisory Committee, uh, Recreation Advisory Committee. Ruth Shirley, Recreation Advisory Committee. Jessica Smith, Recreation Advisory Committee. Uh, Lance Ware, Recreation Advisory Committee. And those are all for review.
How many positions are open on that?
Seven. There's seven on the Recreation Advisory Committee.
How many?
Eleven. Let's move to 3.3, County Commissioner and Staff Items. The Mitchell Rescue Agreement, 3.3A. And we'll need to approve the agreement, and then Michelle will have to work on a resolution. Am I right?
Well, the board will just go ahead and approve it. It's my understanding that the, uh, Ditch County Animal Rescue has approved it. Uh, last I heard, their board chair has not signed it. Um, but if, uh, I, I think this is the agreement that everyone, uh, wanted to proceed with. So it just needs to be a motion to approve it by this board, and, uh, uh, implied that that is the authorization for the chair to sign.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the Mitchell Rescue Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, 3.3B is a schedule change for commissioners meeting from, uh, 3:30 to 6 o'clock. One meeting a month. Uh, and the county attorney would work on a resolution for that.
This does need a resolution. So if the board wants to discuss this matter today, and then I can have, based on your direction to me today, then I can prepare a resolution for the board to, uh, consider at the next meeting. And there are some, uh, posting requirements, uh, for this to inform the public of the change in the, uh, meeting schedule. Uh, so then we'd actually, if the board wanted to proceed... Uh, so then we'd actually, if the board wanted to proceed with that, we would be looking at having the resolution approved, uh, in February and then the policy going into effect in March or later, whenever the board wanted that to be effective.
So we just need a...
If, it's our, the board, if the board will let me know how they want to proceed with, uh, whether or not they want to change the meeting schedule and what that schedule would be changed to, then I can prepare a resolution for next month.
So we would have a motion to approve the schedule change?
Well, it would just really be consensus at this meeting and then the resolution would be out for approval next month.
Was there any discussion, anybody got anything to say?
Well, the genesis of this was, where we got public comment and input that, uh, the accessibility to meetings was somewhat limited in the afternoon. So trying to make the meetings more open and available, uh, was sort of what precipitated moving, uh, to the six o'clock hour, four hour meetings. And the, uh, second meeting that we've been having tended to, uh, be a light agenda or we did not have them all. So that was sort of the reason we moved to have the one meeting a month.
Anybody else?
I'd like to comment. I've been through this one time. During my term, we changed it and it didn't work. People just fell to the wayside and nobody come. It's like I told Cindy when she called me, I'm coming off of the board in June. So I'm not gonna bug what the rest of the board wants, but I don't think it'll work.
You have yours? Yes, he did sign up, okay. Mr. Jenkins, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do it out, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Greg Jenkins, I'm still from the same place. What I've learned here is that people have been beat down in the community to the point in which they don't even trust their own government. And they don't participate. I called Crossner, I think it was. Where did they have the frog jumping competition, Fourth of July? Is that Crossner? I said, "Do you have a public comment?" They said, "No." I said, "Well, the law requires it." Well, nobody shows up. Nobody ever comes. Nobody ever talks. Imagine living in a town where people were so beat down that they didn't even show up to the meetings. Imagine living in a town where the only people in the meetings were the government employees. I wouldn't be very proud of that town. Imagine living in a town where nobody shows up to speak their mind because the meeting is at three thirty and everybody's supposed to be working. Imagine that. So I was gonna hold a town hall meeting and that's when I was told to go back to where I come from. Imagine being a citizen of a community governed by officials that thought that this was acceptable. This is America. It looks like Russia to me. There's not one member of Avery County here today, not one. Are they proud of their community? Is that why there's such great participation? If you change it to six P M., you might get a few more. If they're not so beaten down, afraid to be arrested, ridiculed, scoffed at, and told to go back where they come from, they might show up. There's not one person here from the community. Y'all govern this.
So we have, uh, consensus that this, uh, schedule change, I'm fine, good?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm good, good?
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that the proposed changes, changing the meeting to once a month and it would still be the first Monday of the month.
Yes.
And what time are we talking?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock for start time?
Mm-hmm.
Take a fake twin?
In March, yeah, they'll have a resolution on next month and then March will be the first time.
What, given of, of notice from the first meeting in February to the first meeting in March?
It should, it should.
Okay. We want three point three C Tax Administrator Report and Return Bill.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, please approve our deposits for the month of December, five million, four hundred, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred, fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please approve my releases of eight hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents.
Need a motion to approve. Need second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then in your packet, I had a memo to you about three refunds. One of them was a refund for twenty-twenty-two where we missed an owner. So we're refunding the twenty-two person, rebilling the twenty, the correct owner. Um, you'll also see that release come next month, but that one is a wash. The other two are two keying errors that we had in the office that we need to refund because we actually keyed something and charged somebody an extra tax we shouldn't have charged them. But we caught it and fixed it. And I fixed the system where we can't do that again. So if you'll approve those, I would appreciate that.
Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I can't find my sales. Well, I was gonna go over my sales, but I must not throw them first. I'm a little nervous about something, I don't know why, it would be.
I know.
Um, we're, we had sixty-three sales the month of December of this year as opposed to ninety-five last year. But we're still right in the same percentage of sixty-five percent. And if you'll just look, like, the four-thirty Linville Street in two thousand and eighteen, we had that at seventy-three, seven. Twenty-two, we bumped it to ninety-eight, eight. And it's sold in twenty-three for two hundred and ten. So those things are still happening. So it's slowing down, but not coming down.
What is our collection rate? I wasn't here last...
Um, I did, I, I didn't actually get it this time to bring it to you, but I think it's ninety percent right now because we've been pretty far ahead every month in our collections. So we'll see, I'll, I'll bring you the exact number next month, if that's all right. I think that's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think you have to bring it to us next time.
Yeah, I do have to. I have to report the amount due next time because I didn't last year.
Yes, we did, we're gonna remember.
Yep, I got it. I was gonna bring it this time, but I decided up late. And thank you very much, I really do appreciate it and I enjoy the community that I live in. And I just wanna thank you all for your hard work. And yes, I'm an employee, but I'm a taxpayer too.
Thank you, Congress. Let's move on to three point four, County Commissioners' Reports Request, three point four eight, County Manager Report, Philip Barry G.
Okay, so the first one I'm gonna talk on is the broadband, specifically the completing access to broadband, the CAB grant. Uh, in your packet, you have a document that was published on January, every citizen aware, this board is doing all we can for broadband, but we are still getting guidance written January third of this year on, um, the broadband. So I was part of a webinar, um, last week on, or the fifth of January, a couple of weeks ago. Avery County will still be the first county. We are the guinea pig for doing the CAB grant. So just want everybody to know that, know that, something we're proud of. And in your information packet, you'll see a, uh, we did complete our commitment form on December fourteenth and that's already turned in. So as far as the county doing everything they can do for broadband with the CAB grant, we are, we've checked all the boxes. So I will keep you posted when things change on that. Are there any questions from commissioners on the broadband?
We have Mr. Jenkins signed up to speak on broadband.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins, come on up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I'm Greg Jenkins and I'm from the same place I was when I started here. When I heard y'all talking about internet service, I, I, I thought of SpaceX, Elon Musk immediately. They have the latest, greatest technology. You can be in the middle of Afghanistan and they can throw a satellite up overhead and you got instant internet. Well, they can do that in the real world, right here, America. They can throw a satellite right up over every county and every person in every county can be connected to the internet tomorrow. Every single person. I did the math, the grant was two thou, two million, some odd hundred thousand and you're gonna serve two hundred and thirty-seven people. Two hundred and twenty-two people and fifteen businesses or something. That's eleven thousand dollars per unit. For five hundred bucks, you could've turned everybody on six months ago. Five hundred dollars a person. Instant, high-speed, latest, greatest technology in the world. I had it set up for them to talk to the county manager. They put a special program together for Avery County and I never heard back. But we had the meeting anyways and I recorded it. I put chairs there for all of y'all. I talked to SpaceX for you because I wanted all the facts. I wanted to know if that was the truth and I had it wrote down. And the lady for Government Affairs, International Government Affairs for SpaceX, said, "Greg, we can turn everybody on in Avery County for five hundred dollars a head." I don't know what happened, y'all. We spent two million dollars, hundreds of thousands of Avery County dollars. And we still don't have anything. We're getting notes from people. Kids could've been educated this year, businesses could've been thriving last year. This all could've been done. I don't have anything to do with that. But I just wanted to show you that I'm not here to create nonsense problems. I'm here to provide you with high-tech solutions to situations that you're concerned with. But I asked if my veteran brothers and sisters be taking care of the person. Everybody asked me, "Why don't you take care of everybody, Greg?" I can't. I can only take care of veterans and I'm doing good to do that. But internet is critical to the success of the economy of Avery County and spending eleven thousand dollars per unit, per individual...
That's your time, sir, thank you.
Out of touch. That's way out of touch.
In your packet, switching gears to workforce housing, um, did get a little bit of good news from, um, our, uh, now I've lost my train of thought, sorry about that. Uh, for the Newland project here with Northwest Housing. Uh, they were one of twelve communities to get a grant from the Supportive Housing American Rescue Plan and it was a total of three million dollars. Uh, it will connect the River Walk, Walk-in Newland Project, uh, includes new construction of ten, ten of the rental units across three different buildings to be paid for. Uh, and they also wanted me to know that this month they are applying again for the four percent tax credits with the federal government. So hopefully that project will get up and going. Uh, we'll hear some good news early spring about the four percent federal tax credits. So just, uh, again, just wanted to know everybody, everybody to know what we're doing on housing. Uh, in your information packet, I just want everybody to be aware of the National Opioid Settlement Funds. Our public input meeting will be February twentieth and there's two op, two options for that meeting. There'll be one here from ten to twelve that morning and one at the library from six to eight that night. So there's two options for that, uh, opioid settlement fund. Um, make everyone aware in the information items that the Fire Commission received a grant for smoke alarms for the, for the community. So they are reaching out to schools and others to, uh, get those passed out. Want to thank, uh, Troy Cook for the great job he does funding all these grants. And just make everyone aware that there is a, uh, updated Veterans Report in your information items. And that's all I have.
Okay. Move on to three point four B Finance Officer Report, Caleb Hope.
Good afternoon, Board. I have a few items for your consideration this afternoon. Item number one, the Department of Senior Services has received an AR, ARPA grant from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services in an amount of fifty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars for the purchase of a new walk-in freezer. Request the Board to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay state grant monies, fifty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars, and to credit senior services revenue, fifty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Item number two, the Department of Emergency Management has received a North Carolina Tier Two Non-Competitive Grant. The grant is for hazardous material emergency response planning, training, and related exercise for our region's local emergency planning committee. Request the Board to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay, three thousand dollars, and to credit emergency management grant revenue, three thousand dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve item two.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, the Sheriff's Office has received an insurance reimbursement for a twenty-twenty-one Dodge Charger. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit auto supplies, ten thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents, and credit insurance reimbursements, ten thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mister President.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board. The last item I have in consideration is that the E nine-one-one NCDIT has notified the Department of Central Dispatch that the E nine-one-one fund will only cover maintenance for three primary CAD positions and not the five included in the maintenance agreement with Southern Software. The centerline editing work being done by High Country Council of Governments included some work that was not eligible. These ineligible expenses totaled ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and ten cents and they were fit for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three and we will have to pay that back to the E nine-one-one fund. Request the Board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit transfer to E nine-one-one fund, ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and ten cents. Credit fund balance appropriated, ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and ten cents. Debit E nine-one-one fund transfer, fund balance appropriation, ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and ten cents. And credit transfer E nine-one-one system, ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and ten cents.
Need a motion to adopt the following budget amendment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's all I have for your consideration today unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Jenkins, do you want to speak to this?
Thank you, sir. I, I'm not sure if this is appropriate for this or if it's the right place. And please pardon me if I'm out of line, just tell me, okay?
Yeah.
All right. I understand he's the finance officer and he probably knows how much money he got in the bank. My question is, if you have money in the bank... My question is, if you have money in the bank, I was wondering myself how you could have veterans sleeping on the streets, how you can have police departments without squad cars, how you can have things going on like this in your county and within your communities and you have, I think, over two million dollars in the bank. Am I allowed to ask him how much it is?
Are you gonna speak to the agenda items of what he presented?
The, he presented finances, right? County finances?
Four items, yes.
Okay. So that's what I'm speaking to, the county finances.
Sure. Well, it'd be those, those specific items if Mr. Jenkins had a comment in regard to those items that were specifically on the agenda.
Well, they're not listed on the agenda now.
So I think that it would be the items that Mr. Hope went over in his report.
So how would I...
The NCDIT, which is Department of Information...
Can I have a copy of that and then I'll speak to it?
Sure, I can give you my copy.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you'll let me get all the pages together for...
See, when you look at the agenda and I talked to Philip about this earlier, when he publishes the agenda, he doesn't give the details of what's gonna be spoken about. So how are we supposed to speak on those items, my question? We can't because we don't even know what they are. It's a, it's a good tactic. I'll prepare my, my statement or my comments if you'll give me time to look at what was discussed. Or I'll save it for the next meeting, Mr. Hope. I'm sorry, okay? But do you get my point, Philip? If all you put on here is finance officer report, how do I know what I'm gonna speak on? I'm just speaking on finances.
Okay.
I know, I'm not a Einstein, but I ain't nobody's dummy either.
Okay. Three point four C, county attorney report, Mr. Hope.
I do not have anything that requires any action by the board today. The board has any questions for me on anything?
You guys have anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's move right along to three point seven, approval of minutes, December fourth, 2023, regular meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the December fourth, 2023, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three point eight, agenda consent items. We have any questions or discussions about the agenda consent items that involve that? If not, they'll be approved by consent. Three point nine, informational items. Everybody's looked at informational items and...
Mr. Jenkins had asked...
Mr. Jenkins had to speak that.
About the veteran service report, yes.
Go right ahead, Mr. Jenkins. Come on up.
Okay, did you want the report given first and then I speak on it or...
Well, it's just something they're gonna read.
Okay. Did you wanna read it first?
They, they...
I'm sorry, I have so many questions.
It's okay. No, it's fine.
I, 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 I... I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it. It probably should be published in the newspaper, military.com or somewhere, you know, for my brothers to read. They're very interested in what's going on here, the veterans in Avery County. This is what I wanna speak on this veteran situation. When I came here, I was told there were no homeless veterans. There was just transients. I never met a transient brother on the battlefield. I never met a buck brother on the battlefield that said, I'm fighting for Wetalka County or I'm fighting for South Carolina. Every veteran I know fought for this country. And they have every right to be in Avery County if this is where they choose to be. And Avery County has a debt of gratitude to those individuals that served this great nation and protect and defend this county. And that debt of gratitude is immeasurable, in my opinion. Y'all may think differently, but I don't. I was told that there were no homeless veterans and now when they're trying to collect donations for Christmas, there's homeless veterans two years later. Two years ago, I asked how many veteran contractors were used under the Minority Contract Program in Avery County? Two years later, not one. I asked for that report in public record, public information request. I still haven't received it for two years. I don't know if y'all read the latest statistics, but that's what I go by. When I said y'all were the third largest homeless population in rural America, Housing and Urban Development said it, not me. Yesterday, Housing and Urban Development said veteran homelessness increased seven point four percent last year because of counties like Avery County. Not meeting the commitment to our nation's warriors that they signed up for. We all have an obligation to care for our nation's warriors because the guise of freedom that each and every one of yous live under is provided by the blood, sweat, and tear of those transient veterans. Those seven point four percent, those ten percent that you overlook in your twenty-six million dollar high school contracts. Those are brothers that could put food on their tables if you give them just their minority share. George Bush's last day in office signed an executive order. He made disabled veterans the number one minority in America. You people don't even have the right mindset to hire veteran contractors in your community.
You got that.
In accordance with North Carolina state law.
Thank you, sir. And this is the, next to the, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.